Welcome to the 46th Ward COPA Town Hall. I'm excited to introduce COPA Chief Sidney Roberts, who has more than 30 years of experience in community advocacy, law enforcement, and investigation. I have worked with Chief Roberts since COPA was formed three years ago, and I'm so grateful for her's offices' ongoing partnership with the 46th Ward, especially the work that COPA has done with Uplift High School here in Uptown. And I know that one member of the COPA team who is on this call, Ephraim, was a 46th Ward resident until just recently. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Alderman Kappelman, for giving me a chance to speak with you and with the residents to share my thoughts on what I believe is literally the most important issue facing Chicago and this country, and that's police reform and police accountability. As you mentioned, we've been around for three years, and I too echo the fact that we have developed a good relationship, not only with you, but with also the residents of the 46th Ward, you know, talking about COPA and what we do. But, you know, what's connecting us right now at this moment, I believe, is our shared anger, our shared frustration that citizens of the city of Chicago, particularly our Black and Brown communities, continue to die, continue to be assaulted, and continue to be wrongfully arrested and convicted at the hands of law enforcement. And that was made painfully clear as we watched for more than eight minutes Mr. George Floyd take his last breaths and the ensuing protests around the country, and more specifically here in Chicago. But I'll tell you, the death of Mr. Floyd, you know, it had a personal impact on me. And I gotta tell you, not because I witnessed him being killed by police, because sadly, part of COPA's job is to watch video of police-involved deaths and assaults, and it's something that we have to do far too frequently. It was different because I saw hate and disdain in that officer's eyes. He glared and stared to demonstrate not only the power that he had over Mr. Floyd, but to all the onlookers, he wanted them to know that he was in charge and he had that power. That chilled me. In all my years investigating police officers, whether it was here in Chicago, on the state level, or in New Jersey, I have never witnessed that level of hate, that level of disdain for human beings. But I will tell you that, as you mentioned, I have experience in law enforcement. And it was while I was performing as a law enforcement officer that I knew I had to leave the profession. I had to leave the profession of policing because I wanted to be part of a change that would change the manner of policing in the United States. And I stay here today at COPA because I want to be a part of the vehicle that ensures that uses of force by the police is subject to the strictest of scrutiny, accountability, and consequence. But I think we all have to be clear that an oversight and accountability system alone does not equate to police reform, nor will it alone stop unjustified uses of force. Police reform is a comprehensive set of measures, of which oversight and accountability is but one component. Police reform starts at home, starts through the eradication of racism, through an appreciation and respect for the lives of other people who don't look like you. It starts with an internalized belief that Black lives do matter. And we cannot forget that this country was built on a fundamental belief that Black lives didn't matter. And law enforcement was a contributing factor to that. It was used to control and perpetuate that belief. And so, police reform is about ensuring that trained officers see themselves as problem solvers, that they're trained to be service providers to the community. Use of force training shouldn't focus exclusively on teaching a law enforcement officer how to survive that violent encounter. It should be focused on preventing the violent encounter from happening in the first place. And that's what we're talking about when we talk about a cultural change. And so, in my opening, I was very deliberate in saying "police reform" before I said "police accountability." Because what I know, what I believe we have seen and witnessed not only in Chicago, but in this country, is that the best police accountability system in the world is not going to reform a culturally flawed policing system. Police reform is more than just police accountability. You can't have one without the other and expect meaningful change in the manner in which policing police. And so, when we're thinking about police oversight and accountability, we have to remember one very important thing. Our Constitution gives us the right to life and liberty, but our laws also give law enforcement the right to deprive us of those rights and to use force in depriving of us of those rights. And so, the government has a responsibility. The government has a duty to ensure that the deprivation of our constitutional rights is subject to the strictest scrutiny and that noncompliance is subject to consequences. And it's in that backdrop that COPA exists. Now, COPA's had civilians conducting police misconduct investigations since the 70s. COPA was then and remains today a pioneer in civilian oversight. There are still only a handful of oversight bodies within this country that have the authority to investigate misconduct by their local police department. That also has the authority to require that department to act on those investigations. You know, that said, OPS, IPR, it endured legitimate criticism, ranging from a lack of independence, a lack of meaningful authority, underfunding, they lacked transparency, and they had a flawed investigative process. In COPA, we have overcome many of these criticisms in our current process. I mean, a few things I want to point out. COPA is the community. We're civilians, just like everyone else. We live in the neighborhoods in all wards and all police districts. We encompass every race, religion, sexual preference. We are gay, we're straight, we're transgender, we're disabled. We are impacted parties of police misconduct, and we're former members of law enforcement. And me, I have been both a former member of law enforcement and I've been a victim of police misconduct. The experiences, personal and professional, of our COPA staff is monolithic. COPA is an independent agency of the mayor's office. We have no reporting obligation to the mayor. We don't preview our findings to the mayor, and we don't take investigative direction from the mayor. COPA is meaningfully funded. We have a dedicated funding floor of 1% of CPD's budget. Our current budget right now is $18 million. We have an authorized headcount of 151 people. Now, we're not fully funded, or I mean, we're not fully staffed right now, but we devote the largest percentage of our staff, over 90 investigators, to the conduct of investigations. We have 15 attorneys who support those investigations. We have a data unit that's responsible for facilitating all of our transparency, including complaint data, misconduct data. We have a public policy unit that addresses systemic problems and issues that we see within the police department. The chief administrator, while appointed by the mayor, must be confirmed by city council and can only be removed for cause. COPA has a training division, which conducts a six-week mandatory training academy for investigators and attorneys. And yearly in-service proficiency-based training has been a staple since inception. COPA has a public affairs team with a robust community engagement platform that last year had personal contact with more than 10,000 Chicagoans and continues to remotely engage residents in meetings such as this. COPA's investigative authority is administrative. We recommend discipline, training, and termination. But we do work with our law enforcement partners. Every single complaint against a police officer must be directed to COPA for review and to determine if jurisdiction lies within our agency or BIA. Because COPA's jurisdiction is directed at the most egregious allegations of misconduct and uses of force, specifically excessive force, domestic violence, improper search seizure, denial of counsel, coercion, verbal abuse. That's biased. COPA investigates every single officer-involved shooting, every single death in custody and every single death as a result of police action. We have a response team that deploys to officer-involved shootings whenever and wherever they occur, whether that's at 2:00 in the morning, 12:00 noon. We have a response team equipped with a deputy chief, a major case specialist, evidence technicians, and investigators that respond to these scenes, conducting our investigations in real time immediately. COPA has the same access to records and staff as if we were internal to the department. And what that means is officers must participate and participate truthfully in our investigations. And the failure to do so results in discharge. COPA has the authority to demand that the department act on our investigations. COPA is significantly and meaningfully more transparent. Every single investigative summary report is posted on our website. In fact, in the first six months of 2020, we posted 79 new investigative reports to our website, 35 of which involve sustained findings. We post every single video and audio record, as well as department records of officer-involved shootings on our website. This quarter, we posted seven for a total of 291 video releases of officer-involved shootings since inception. We also report all our complaint and misconduct statistical data to our website. COPA is also subject to oversight, oversight of our operational policies and investigative reports by the Public and Safety Inspector General, but also by our federal monitors. And importantly, COPA is subject to community and civilian oversight. By each and every one of you, we hold ourselves accountable. By being here and talking to you and hearing you say, "enough is enough," is accountability for us. But that said, we're still faced with challenges, challenges that impact our operations. The union contract and state law require complaints be signed by an affidavit. We're barred from acting on anonymous complaints. Our investigative and discipline process remains long and protracted. And we're still challenged in our building of trust and confidence in the community. But despite these challenges, we're making impact. In the last two years, COPA has found more shootings unjustified in Chicago than in previous years. We are sustaining more complaints than ever before. Our sustained rate is at 42%. This past quarter, we sustained 27 of our 75 cases that we closed with findings. COPA has sought to relieve officers of their police powers while they are under investigation by our office. And this occurred most recently with the protest complaints. We sought and received the relief of eight officers while we investigate those complaints. We have recommended more officers be suspended and terminated for misconduct than in previous years. This last quarter, we recommended that eight officers be terminated. We have sent three times as many cases to the police board, and they have ruled in our favor of our discipline recommendations 77% of the time. COPA cases that have gone to arbitration, in those instances, the arbitrators have ruled in our favor 55% of the time. And contrary to criticisms of OPS and IPR, COPA has sought termination for officers engaging in a code of silence and for lying during our interviews and on their official reports. And COPA and the city, even with this progress, more progress is needed. We remain accountable to you. We need more progress in police reform and more progress in police accountability to bring about a procedurally and socially just policing system. Just a few things. Policing should be subject to licensing requirements that require yearly retraining and certification, inclusive of psychological testing. An officer goes through a psychological test before he gets hired and is never tested again to see if they still remain suitable to do the job. They should receive training beyond firearms qualifications. We still have barriers to filing a complaint or investigating anonymous complaints, and those need to be removed. Officers fired for misconduct should be permanently barred from being hired in another law enforcement agency. Officers fired for misconduct should not be entitled to their pension benefits, and more is needed. And so, when I mentioned when I opened that police reform requires more than oversight and accountability system, for too long, the only accountability system in Chicago and really in this country have been individual internal affairs agencies and lawsuits. Those will not solve policing practices that are objectionable, biased, and disparate. COPA responds to misconduct. We must focus on those policing reform measures that are aimed at preventing misconduct from happening in the first place. And while we cannot police our way out of a Chicago's crime and violence problem, the discipline or discharge of individual officers, one at a time, it cannot be the sole method for eliminating police misconduct and bad policing practices. And so, I'll close with this. And it's similar to what I mentioned in the beginning. Police reform cannot happen with just a civilian oversight and accountability system. Police reform cannot happen without a civilian oversight and accountability system. But even when policing is reformed, we will still need a civilian oversight and accountability system to provide trust and legitimacy to the actions of law enforcement. I really appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to talk to you. I'm really interested in hearing your comments, your thoughts, your suggestions for addressing, again, what is Chicago's most pressing issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief Roberts. We have a few questions that folks have submitted. And some of these questions, I think you've already provided some answers, but I think they need to be underscored, especially this first question, because several people asked that. It was, "A number of our residents are concerned that COPA has a strong connection to the mayor's office, and that this means the investigations you conduct can be swayed by the administration." So what exactly is that connection between COPA and the mayor's office? By which I mean, what power does the mayor have over COPA? And does this affect COPA's ability to remain independent?
I mean, I cannot state this more emphatically. And the answer is none. We open our investigations. We make our jurisdictional decisions based on the case. We do our investigations. The mayor's office gets no further notice from us about what we're doing on those investigations. They don't impact our decisions. They don't impact our thought process. They don't weigh in on our investigative strategy. They literally have nothing to do with our investigation, our investigative strategy, our investigative decisions, our investigative outcomes. It just doesn't happen. I agree that that could be an accusation, but it just is not how it happened. And I will tell you this. I am not concerned about being fired for any decision that I make, but if a decision that I make results in my termination, then so be it. I mean, this isn't my first job where I've been in a position where my decisions adversely impact the administration. I'm a former inspector general, where I would issue findings that were adverse to the governor. When I worked Internal Affairs in the state of New Jersey, I would issue findings against officers that were adverse. This is not new to me, and it does not sway my decisions. I mean, I make the decisions based on the facts and evidence available to me without influence from the public, without influence from the mayor's office, without influence from the police department, based exclusively on the facts and evidence uncovered during the course of that investigation.
Thank you. Thank you. So here's the second question. I know that you've been having conversations with these, like these, all over the city. So I'm guessing that you've been asked a lot about CPAC and GAPA. One of the comments that people stress is that Chicago needs true community elected oversight over the police. What are your thoughts about this? Can you talk about what police accountability would look like in Chicago under the CPAC or GAPA ordinances? And how would they change the work that you currently do?
So for me, I certainly believe that there is room for greater community involvement in police accountability. You know, whether it's CPAC, whether it's GAPA, I mean, I leave that to the decision of the elected officials. For me, as long as I am responsible for investigating police misconduct investigations, I'm going to continue to investigate those police misconduct investigations, and I'm going to continue to reach findings and make decisions based upon the facts and evidence of the case.
Thank you. Next question. Can you explain the consent decree and COPA's role and the city's efforts to meet the decree?
Sure. So COPA is largely, the consent decree has about seven sections. The accountability section is one of those sections. And so, we are referenced largely within the accountability section. Its impact to us is to the quality of our investigations. It impacts us with respect to training. It impacts us with respect to developing a meaningful mediation program. It also directed us to take a more active, responsive role to domestic violence and creating a system whereby we can respond to domestic violence incidents in much the same way that we respond to officer-involved shooting. It also expanded our jurisdiction with respect to sexual misconduct complaints.
Okay. Here's a question about Friday's protest in Grant Park. CPD officers pepper sprayed, tear gassed, and beat some protesters Friday, July 17. And if we don't institute full surveillance and control of the police through CPAC and reduce the police budget, how can incidences like this be prevented?
Well, again, I think what we're talking about is police reform that will yield a cultural change in policing. You know, and that requires more than just an accountability system. I mean, we need different training. Law enforcement needs to have better guidance, you know, in how they engage the community. Many of the things that I believe need to occur that will yield to a more procedurally and socially just policing system are in fact contained within the consent decree.
Thank you. Another thing, going back to the mayor. Does COPA give the mayor a heads up on cases they're opening?
No. No, we just don't. Nor when we're closing. Nor when we decide to take other investigative actions. It's just not part of the process.
Okay. The work of COPA or any other police accountability organization to investigate police misconduct, it will always be reactive. And based on COPA's experiences investigating officers, are there policy changes that you would recommend that could proactively address the culture of policing to prevent misconduct to begin with? And you already talked about some of that.
Yeah, some of the things that, I mean, straight off of our investigations, we believe that enhanced training in Fourth Amendment would be beneficial. As a matter of fact, we will be commenting on CPD's Fourth Amendment training, some of the changes that they have made to that. We also believe greater training in use of force will be helpful. There needs to be greater oversight by the superior officers of the Chicago Police Department that would also be beneficial. Again, more training, more situational training, more engagement with the community. All of those things will help to bring about a better policing system. But we are talking about a cultural change. And that has to encompass a host of reforms. And it's not just one to the exclusion of the other.
Alderman Kappelman, if I can just jump in here. Chief Roberts, do you mind helping the audience understand what Fourth Amendment is for those that may not be?
Sure, sure. Fourth Amendment is about ensuring that individuals follow or that law enforcement follows proper procedures in stopping an individual and searching an individual. So it's about proper search and seizure and compliance with both state and federal law.
Thank you. Thank you. Chicago recently negotiated a new contract with the Police Supervisor Union that added increased anonymity for people filing complaints against officers. Do you think with these added protections, more people will feel comfortable speaking out against misconduct? Or do you think the new process will allow people to file false complaints?
No. I mean, I think the process would certainly help. There are just some people who are apprehensive about signing a complaint. They fear retaliation. They feel being targeted. And I think that those are legitimate concerns. And so, for me and for COPA, we believe that those would be extremely helpful to us. And I will say this. Whether we, for every complaint that was sent to us anonymously, I mean, we still have to go through the complaint to make sure that it is capable of being investigated, that it does have some validity and credibility to the complaint. And so, to the extent that a false complaint has been made, those are things that we should be able to mete out during the preliminary investigation of our complaints.
Next question. How long does the entire investigative process typically take from the intake procedure to the final decision?
Sure. You know, by ordinance, I am sorry. Sorry. By ordinance, we are required or expected to complete our investigations within 180 days. And if those investigations are not completed within 180 days, we send notification to the officer. We send notification to the complainant, letting them know that we are still investigating those cases. Now, while a significant number of our cases are completed within the first year of receiving them, there are some cases that just simply take longer than that. They could take longer than that because of the complexity of the case. Officer-involved shootings tend to take longer. Excessive force tend to take longer. Sometimes domestic violence complaints take longer because we're spending significant amount of time building confidence and trust in the complainant. Some of our complaints also have criminal investigations that are going as well. And so, we want to make sure that we don't do anything that compromises the integrity of the criminal investigations. And so, sometimes there are legitimate explanations in which those cases take longer. But we are aware, you know, that it is problematic, and we do everything that we can to address it.
Thank you. The second most reported form of police misconduct is sexual violence. And someone states that it's estimated that a police officer is caught in the act of sexual misconduct every five days. How does COPA address these cases? And what actions can COPA take to prevent these instances from happening?
Sure. Again, COPA's authority to, you know, we respond to the misconduct. And so, it is our hope that our response to that misconduct, it is our hope that the consequences for misconduct serve as a deterrent effect, right? So that not only does it prevent So that not only does it prevent the involved officer from re-engaging in the behavior, but it also will prevent other people from engaging in that behavior. But when we get misconduct complaints, again, we start our investigation by contacting the complainant, interviewing them, getting all their evidence to help us build our particular case. You know, we review records, if there's video, we review video. We take all the necessary steps to build a case and reach a finding. What I will tell you is that we do get our fair share of sex misconduct complaints. One of the cases that we were working on not too long ago resulted in an officer being convicted. We frequently recommend discharge for those types of complaints. You know, so we seek severe penalties for that.
Thank you, thank you. One of the criticisms the police are currently facing in the wake of protests is their conduct in schools. Students of color say they are uncomfortable with police. And the majority of arrests police make in schools are students of color. The students of color feel they are being targeted. And data suggests they are right to feel this way. Given the city council's decision to keep school resource officers as an option for schools, what is COPA doing to address the issues that are occurring as a result of police behavior in the schools? And what is COPA's response to the many students of color who feel uncomfortable around their school resource officers?
Sure, you know, for COPA, again, you know, our responsibility is to investigate complaints made against police officers. And so the first thing that we have done is, and Ephraim, I may ask you to fill in here, but I mean, we have spent the last two years working very closely with youth in the city of Chicago. And so I'm going to ask Ephraim to talk about that. But before I do, I want to make clear that misconduct occurring at the, within the Chicago Police Department, if it involves excessive force, improper search and seizure, coercion, bias-based verbal abuse or verbal abuse that is sexual in nature that falls within our jurisdiction, and we investigate that, we have open cases against officers for misconduct that has occurred within the schools. And so, you know, again, our job is to investigate and we do that. I would like to turn it over to Ephraim to talk about what I think is one of the hallmarks of COPA. And I'm very pleased with what we've been doing with our youth.
I appreciate it, Chief. So actually, and we definitely appreciate the question. One of the things that we recognize is as we looked at just Chicago as a whole, especially when COPA first launched, was not to forget the impact that young people have had on the city of Chicago just in general. Young people are often protesting, they are very much social justice minded, and they have a voice that they often want to express. And so what we started doing, actually, almost after COPA launched, we started going directly into the high schools, making sure that young people first understood what Chicago Police Department's use of force policies are and what officers are trained on. We wanted the young people to be informed. We also wanted them to be informed of legal terms that they often would hear, totality of circumstances, objectability, reasonableness, things like that, so that they could understand kind of the, some of the vernacular that's used when it comes to civilian oversight, police accountability, and just law enforcement as a whole. But then we even went a step further. We started doing mock investigations, which really has been a hallmark that COPA has been being recognized for across the city. We started doing it in one school and it turned what should have been a three-class kind of situation to the entire high school going through it. And then the word started to spread and we began going from high school to high school. And which honestly brought us even to uplift to do the same. And what we really want to make sure is that young people are equipped, that they know how to handle themselves. They understand requirements that CPD follow as it relates to use of force. We want young people to know their rights, but we also want them to know that if they have an issue, that they believe misconduct has occurred, that they can come to us with that complaint of misconduct. We don't want them to try to fight a battle at the moment, but to use the accountability structure and process that the city has put in place. And that requires that we be out and active with them. And so over the past almost three years, we've touched definitely thousands of young people. By this time, we've been in nearly 50 schools or educational institutions. And it's really to empower young people. And we hear from them as well, make recommendations to us about how to better interact with them, how to better get information to them. And honestly, some of it has resulted in young people actually being type of ambassadors for us to get the word out. And so we want principals to be also informed. So we started attending parent universities, the CAC meetings. We started visiting local school councils. And we really also want to, as we approach this new school year, begin to work with principals so that they are fully aware of the information that they can relate to students or parents who are having those kind of experiences. We don't want them to be unequipped and without proper information.
Thank you, Ephraim. We've had a lot of the questions that were offered before this began. Now we're starting to get questions, we have time for additional questions. So this one question is, what kind of transparency do individuals have when it comes to the investigations as they are being conducted? And how does a public view current and previous investigations?
Sure. So one of the things is for complainants, actually, this is Ephraim's spot as well. Complainants, when they have an open investigation, the one thing that they can do is they can always call our office to find out exactly where their investigation is, you know, what has happened, what our next steps are, as long as it won't compromise the integrity of the investigation. We do try to make sure that we provide information to our complainants and that we stay engaged with our complainants. One of the other things that people can do is you can go onto the portal, the city's portal, city's data portal. And if you have the complaint number, you can put the complaint number, the log number in. And you can find that particular case and find out where it is in its investigative process. When we complete our investigation, we post that investigative summary report onto our website. You can go onto our website, go into, I think it says, data portal, data. You go onto publications and you'll see right there, it'll say, "Summer Reports of Investigations." There are hundreds of completed COPA investigations that are on our website. It will, and in our investigation investigative reports, we will tell you what happened. We will identify every single person that we interviewed, we will tell you what they said. We will identify every documentary piece of evidence that we review. We will provide a summary of what that evidence was. It includes the legal analysis, we will tell you the applicable rules and laws that guided our decision. And we will tell you exactly how we got there and we will tell you what our recommendation was for that particular case. So from a transparency standpoint, complainants can call and ask about an investigation. Our summary report is placed on our data portal. The public can track investigations through the city's portal. Now, in the aggregate, you can go onto our website and you can find, and you will see how many complaints we open every single month. You will see what district those complaints are in. Alderman, if, as you're aware, every month, we, or at least for the last four months, I believe, we've been providing the wards with a monthly report of the number of complaints we received, the number of complaints that we've closed, where they're located. So there's lots of information on our website. There's lots of information on our city portal. One of the other transparency things that we do, as I mentioned, is we put out video associated with every single officer-involved shooting. Now, in addition to that video, we put the 911 tape. We put the audio transmissions between the police officers and OEMC. And we also put the use of force report, if there was an arrest report, that goes up there. So there's a tremendous amount of information. And I would encourage the residents of your ward to go to our website, There is a host of information. We just released our quarterly report that also contains a lot of information. We've made great strides, actually monumental strides, in the last three years in transparency as compared to IPR and OPS.
Put a link on our website for that.
Thank you, thank you.
And if I can just also add, for everything that Chief Roberts just mentioned, we also, our Public Affairs Division is kind of the walking transparency as well. So you can always go to the website and do all the things that she mentioned. But if there needs to be a COPA representative at your block club meeting, your neighborhood watch meeting, church meeting, just a group of friends getting together and really want COPA to come in and talk, we understand that Chicago is a grassroots city and we have grassroots community and residents who get together. We have been doing these type of presentations all over the city of Chicago. We've done over 300 presentations and participate in a meeting since we've launched. And so if you would like us to come out and give district information to a particular group, it doesn't have to necessarily be driven by the Alderman. If the Alderman wants to do it at the ward meeting, we'll do it there. But if in your group settings, if you want us to come and share information, we would definitely do that and bring you exactly what you're asking for and do the same. Try to answer as many questions as possible because we want to be that transparent to the residents in city of Chicago they deserve.
And if I can add, you know, I will tell you on a personal note, part of my goal is to be accountable to you. Part of my goal is to answer the hard questions. Part of my goal is to listen to your criticisms of how we operate. Because at the end of the day, the only thing that we want to do is the best job that we can do and to hold these officers accountable, to seek justice for those people who have suffered at the hands of law enforcement. And so I assure you, we do show up and we show up. And, you know, one of the things that I want to mention, you know, when we talk about engagement with the community, you know, when, when an individual dies at the hands of law enforcement, we reach out to that family member and have a personal dialogue where we sit and tell them what the investigative process is going to be, what they can expect from us, how they can hold us accountable. I mentioned that we released these officer-involved shooting videos. Before we release that video publicly, we contact that family and we bring them in and we give them the opportunity to preview that video. Because for me, as a mother of a black son, I cannot imagine what it would feel like to watch for the first time my son dying and it's shown on television. And the other thing that I would like to say about that, as much as everybody wants transparency, I will tell you, more victims' families have told me, can they stop me from releasing that video than putting that video out? Because they, it's their son, it's their cousin, it's their husband. And knowing that that is out there and the public is not something that gives them a lot of comfort. But I explained to them that we will make sure you get to see it first so that you can process that. And before we release our summary report of investigation to the public, to the world, we bring that family in or we go to them and we take them through that investigative report. And we tell them what we did, how we reached our findings, why we reached our findings. And we have that conversation with them, whether we found that officer acted within policy or outside of policy. We owe that to the people who had, one, the courage to sign complaints, or two, whose family suffered as a result of police misconduct. And so, you know, engaging the community, that is key. And it is how we build trust. And I hope that through, you know, fielding questions from you guys will help you to not only understand our process, but also our commitment to doing the job that we've been asked to do.
Thank you, thank you. Here's another question. How has COPA worked for Chicago since the 70s? How will COPA make me or my black and brown neighbors feel safe? Why should I support something that seems like it hasn't worked?
So a couple of things that I will say, and it's really reiterating some of what I said before. To change policing, we need more than just a police accountability system. A police accountability is reactive. We respond to the misconduct. And so when we talk about changing police practices, we need more than just COPA. The second thing that I will say is that some of the criticisms of the former agencies, OPS and IPR, don't exist within the construct of COPA. Our investigations are yielding more accountability. As I mentioned before, our sustain rate is at 42%. The former iterations did not have that sustained rate. COPA goes to every single officer-involved shooting, irrespective of whether or not an individual was injured or fatally killed. OPS and IPR, they did not go to the shooting of an officer involved, of an officer-involved shooting if they didn't make contact. Marksmanship should certainly not be the bar for accountability. That an officer missed his intended target should not negate an investigation. I would say that our discipline recommendations are more severe and are just more. And so we are taking and responding more aggressively, I would say, to those complaints. And we're doing more thorough investigations. And we are investigating more incidents than were previously investigated. And we are doing it in a transparent way, letting the community know, letting the community have the benefit to review our reports to assess whether or not it is a thorough investigation. Having meetings like this where we're sitting and talking about accountability, those are things that did not exist before.
Right.
Also just to add a correction, Chief Roberts, I think you misspoke, actually, in your comments. And I think that's where the question came from. Actually, civilian oversight started in Chicago in the 1970s. COPA didn't start in 1970. COPA actually started in 2017 and it replaced IPR. So actually, Chief Roberts, in your opening comments, you actually said COPA. So I think the question makes it appear as if COPA's been around a long time. But COPA actually just launched in 2017. Oversight has been here in Chicago since the 1970s.
Thank you, Ephraim, appreciate it. And apologies, that was a big misstep.
No problem at all. So who oversees COPA? And what checks exist to make sure that your team is effective?
Sure. So for every, every time we close an investigation, that case is reviewed by the Public Safety Inspector General within the Office of the Inspector General, where they review those reports. If they identify a material deficiency, they can request that we reopen those investigations. Our completed investigations are also reviewed by the independent monitors. And I would also say again, and I will reiterate, go onto our website and review the reports that we are writing and assess for yourself whether those were comprehensive investigations, and assess for yourself whether those were comprehensive investigations, whether those investigations were biased, whether those investigations were were thorough. So each of you have the ability to hold us accountable, but through the structure, we are held accountable by the Public Safety Inspector General within the city of Chicago's Office of Inspector General as well as the independent federal monitors.
Thank you. Based off of the information from Copa's website, one of the core values of Copa is transparency. If you and Copa are in full of support of police accountability in Chicago, do you agree that the city council should move to release the misconduct records from 1967 to present to ensure full transparency and therefore grant reparations to those unlawfully persecuted at the hands of CPD?
Okay, so under our current operation, I believe, and we do support the release of all of Copa's investigations. Honestly, I think that's a decision that city council has to make. We don't have those records. So that's, you know, I believe in transparency. But the release of records going back to 1969 is, you know, those are decisions for, you know, really for city council or the Department of Law. I don't even know how that happens or the vehicle to make that happen. But what I do know is that Copa posts every single investigation that we do and reach a finding on on our website, which clearly articulates what we did, how we did it, the resources that we relied upon, the law that we relied upon to reach our findings and the corresponding recommendations of those.
Thank you. And part of that question was for me, and I also believe that we should release those records from 1967 to present and that we should be making reparations. I've also been very open about the need to make reparations to the African-American community as a city. And I'm a co-sponsor of a resolution that that looked at that. But part of reparations meaning means also looking at reparations for those black and brown people who were incarcerated unjustly. And that's why we we know that from looking from the our past records from 67 on up. That's how we will know it. So I I believe it needs to be released. Here's another question. Let me see. How would the city have handled the Laquan McDonald shooting under Copa? Under GAPA?
Yeah, so under Copa, if that was to happen today, one of the first things is, of course, we would have responded in real time to that investigation. We would have reviewed body worn camera on scene. We would have participated in the walkthrough, we would have observed evidence collection. We would have made communication with the state's attorney to let them know exactly what was going on at that at that particular time. We would have made sure that every officer that was involved in that situation was separated and could not engage in any collusion. We would also have promptly within promptly, but no later than 60 days, released all video associated with that incident. And when I say all video, it would have been body worn camera video, pod video, CTA video, if it was available, third-party video, if the individuals would have allowed us and and given us permission to utilize that information. We would have released the OEMC reports, the 911 calls, the use of force reports. Well, there wasn't an arrest, but I mean, we would have done that. We then would have begun our investigation, which would have included interview every single officer, all the civilian officers. We would have reviewed all the appropriate records. We would have applied the actions of that officer and associated the those actions with not only department policy, but state law. We would have reviewed relevant case law and we would have issued a finding and made a recommendation. Part of that, we would have been in constant communication with the family member, making sure that they had the opportunity to review the video. We would have kept them apprised of the investigation. We would have walked them through our investigation and our investigative findings before releasing that report. So in sum, a host of different things would have occurred.
Thank you, thank you so much. I I want to be mindful of everybody's time because we are at 7:00 PM. Thank you, Chief Roberts, and thank you, Ephraim, and the whole Copa team. And thank you to all of our guests this evening. This is the first of several town halls that we have planned on topics that are important to 46 Ward residents. We'll send out those opportunities in my email newsletter. Just go to james46.org to sign up. Thank you again for spending part of your part of your evening here and good night, everyone.
MacKappleman, if I if I can also add, if people would like to have Copa come out, you can email us at copa-publicaffairs@chicagocopa.org. We hope that your office will also share this with those that are on the call. So again, if you want us to make a presentation and want to engage us in a any kind of dialogue that we can be helpful in bringing you along and understanding Copa as an agency, you can email copa-publicaffairs@chicagocopa.org. We want to bring you along in the conversation. As Chief Roberts always says about Copa, city of Chicago, law enforcement and residents, accountability involves all of us and we want you to join us in this conversation.
Thank you. And that was one of the comments later on that I couldn't get to. People don't know about Copa and they want to know more about it. So we'll, you have that information here and we'll have it taped so it can be released to people. But we'll also put a link in our newsletter because this kind of information is so important. We want to be transparent. This is the way we can do it. So thank you again so much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.